Good evening and welcome to the December 9th, 2014, meeting of the Phoenixville Borough Council. We'll start with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Crack, roll call please. Mr. Bowers.
President.
Mr. Dalton.
Present.
Ms. Stugan.
Here.
Mr. Ictor.
Present.
Mr. Kuzner.
Present.
Ms. Mayo.
Here.
Mr. Prednik.
Here.
Mr. Kowalewski.
Present.
Mr. Mayor.
September 5.
Manager, solicitor, and chief are here. You have seven present making up the quorum, and then you have Mrs. Mayo who's participating by voice. Thank you, Mr. Crack. Moving on with the agenda. Item three, consider approval of the November 18th and the November, or the November 10th and November 18th meeting minutes. What is council's pleasure?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ictor, second by Mr. Bowers, to approve both sets of minutes. Any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Moving on to item four, we have the pleasure of having two presentations tonight. The first one from Trap Ambulance, and I'll ask Renee Sullivan, the outreach coordinator, Clint Tichnell, chief of Trap Ambulance, to come forward.
Thank you, Mr. President. Basically, I'll just give a quick background. My name's Clint Tichnell, chief VMS for Trap. Renee Sullivan, outreach coordinator. Basically, what we wanted to do here was when, I think it's been over a year, it was back in 2013, when we became the 911 EMS provider for the borough. And one of the things we wanted to do was kind of instill a sense of community within everyone and kind of just find our own place as we started moving. One of the projects that we had that I wanted to kind of see done was when we had our new ambulances made up, we left a spot on the door for a logo for the Phoenixville Division. I'd approached the high school, and we talked to Beth and some of the folks from the school, and she made it the project for the art, her art department to basically come up with a design and a logo. We got the, we got the design. It's perfect. It's beautiful. We love it, and we just wanted to present the award for the winning student, and I'll turn it over to Renee to handle that aspect of it.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. President. A little bit of background. Ms. Lee's, the art teacher for the Phoenixville High School, was so on board with this. We came in with our patch and said, "Look, can the kids, you know, put together a patch that would, you know, bring Trap, you know, ambulance into Phoenixville and kind of tie it all into one?" So she made it the actual senior project for all of her students, and then she sent it out to the rest of her students. And Shonice Mercado, the young lady who did win, was one of the students who put in her artwork. And we got about 30 pieces, so I thought this is going to be very, you know, tough to do. The first pass through the artwork was amazing. These kids are so bright and so imaginative. So of course, you know, we had our work cut out for us. We came back through and gave them a couple tips and a few pointers, and the second pass came through, and Ms. Mercado did a phenomenal job, and I'd like to present it to her. Just a little bit of background about our nice young lady. She was just a junior when we presented it to her and the rest of the classmates, and her piece was just inspired by firefighters and Phoenixville in general. And, you know, not having any history, not getting to talk to us at all, this was all just right from the heart, which, you know, is, just speaks to her artwork. She's going to apply to art school, and thankfully, because she's very, very talented this year as a senior, and she says that her artwork is inspired by, it's a, you know, part of her, but it's also inspired by the events that happen around her, her memories, and of course, her family. So if you don't mind, we'd like to bring her up and present it to her. Thank you. For your, this is the artwork, that one. Not too tall to show it over the podium, so I probably, but this is it. So.
Shonice, the certificate and check, hopefully you can, another dollar check, hopefully can go towards supply, school, whatever you need it for. We appreciate your work. Thank you very much.
On behalf of Trap Ambulance, we'd like to give you this as a piece to remember as a flag. We look forward to working with you on this piece further until it becomes something else. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Mercado, for all your hard work, and it is a beautiful design, and I know it'll look beautiful on the ambulance once it gets there. Moving on to the second presentation, we're also honored to be joined by Commander Bing Gesmer, Junior Vice Commander John LaRusso, Junior, Judge Advocate Dan Mahoney, and Chaplain George Hunter from the VFW.
Thank you, sir. These are my officers. We're proud to be here tonight to present a little gift to the police department, helping out with serving and protecting the community. But right now, I'd like to introduce Don Mahoney. He's my, he is my judge advocate. John is my junior vice, also my service officer and officer, and also my adjutant. George is, George, I'm sorry. George is my chaplain. John, Don, please?
You know, last night, we had some of the, we had the Lieutenant Sosrum, and the mayor were kind enough to come up to our meeting last night and presented with us with a nice plaque. We certainly appreciate that. We brought it back down to us to get a picture. But just for a few moments, and I, and the mayor has been kind enough to indulge me along with the Borough Council, just like to put out the word what the VFW in Phoenixville does and what we're about. First of all, as our name implies, folks, VFW, Veterans in Foreign Wars. We, primary mission is to help the veterans of our community. And our footprint encompasses Charlestown, Schuylkill, and East Pike, East Pikeville, including the borough of Phoenixville. And what we do, when veterans come to us with problems, you know, financial problems in the way of, "I can't get my heating bill paid. I have trouble with my electric bill." We don't give cash out to veterans, but what we do, we honor those bills and we pay those. We pay those so they can move on and sort of like get steadiness and tranquility back in their life, in their lives so they can move forward. Also, we help veterans work their way through the paperwork in the VA system. Most of the folks that come to us don't realize, if you've ever put the uniform on, there are all sorts of benefits that are available, but they are reluctant to go in there because it is a little push initially with the paperwork. But there's things like free healthcare, eyeglass care, hearing aids, which I have, don't have them tonight, but I do have them. So there's, there's these types of benefits. Moving forward on that, we've helped veterans get into Southeastern Veterans Center up in Spring City, which is a domicile service, unique, unique hospital complex up in Spring City where they have their own rooms, they have a 24-hour care, and it's, I mean, it's really, if you've never been there, it's something you see. The vets really are taken care of, and that's part of what, the mission, give back to the community. Now, in that same vein, we are, we are certainly cognizant of our responsibility as a charitable organization within the structure of Phoenixville. To give you a couple names, and believe me, this is just a partial list, we contributed this past year to Mom's House, to the clinic, to the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts of Phoenixville. We've been able to send the Boy Scouts, for instance, to camp, the entire troop, for the last three or four years. We pay that entire bill. Because a lot are from, you know, split families, we're able to help in that way. We do the Phoenixville Area High School, which I'm glad to see the representatives here, because we have a thing called the Voice of Democracy. The students, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, have an opportunity to submit a narrative to the specific subject, which the VA comes up with this year, was are veterans still relevant? The winning young lady from Phoenixville High School received a check from us for, will receive a check from us for $1,000, and she moved up to the district, from district to state to national. It's really neat, because a person who would go all the way would have $50,000 towards their college education. That's a pretty good thing. But, you know, we also, obviously, the Phoenixville Police Department, proud servant, you know, proudly serve the community of Phoenixville. We work with them. Schuylkill Township, we were able to help them out with some new armament systems. East Pikeville with some senior citizen wristbands where, you know, they can find you if you get lost type of thing. But what I'm just trying to put out here, folks, is that the VA is not just a place to come have a free drink or a cheap drink. It's a, it's a place to come and gather with your brothers and help your, you know, help your community. So far this year, we have given out $112,500, you know, and that's pretty good for, for the organization up there. And we maintain, you know, we're really tight. We have meetings every Monday night, so nobody's scolding with anything. Can't get a free beer at that place, I'm telling you, it's tough. So, in any event, that proactivity is going to be example, you'll get another example shortly here. But what I'd like to say in closing is all of us and our families have veterans. I mean, there's a dad, a mom, a cousin, a brother, an uncle, an aunt. All those people, listen to their stories, and if they need help, send them up to 200 Star Street. Have them come down, visit with us, because if we can't help them directly there, our service officer, Chief LaRusso, helicopter pilot from Afghanistan, can push these people through that paperwork and get them, you know, the rewards and the service they deserve. Now, in closing, I would like to bring our Commander Bing Gesmer, and I think we need the chief up here, and probably the mayor, for the presentation, the presentation.
I'm sitting here.
All right, Amy.
All right. On behalf of the Huntington Towers and Campbell Legion of Foreign Wars, the Phoenix Department, we're honored to present, present the police department with a check and a total of $12,000, helping to supply, put supplies where needed.
And I'd like to just officially kind of re-present you, gentlemen, with this level of appreciation for the financial assistance that they give the Phoenixville Police Department. It's a huge amount of money that we received from them this year. It's, it wasn't expected initially when they came to us and said, "What do you guys need?" It was tremendous to be able to put together kind of a plan and program of things that we didn't think that we would be able to get for a number, a number of years, and now we can. And I can tell you that the money, the proceeds that are given to the police department are used for equipment, and there's two, really two types of equipment that we use. The equipment that we would use to protect ourselves, and the equipment that we would use to better service the community that we're here to protect. So, when you get to the police department, you're really giving to the entire community, and you get the full police department's management and head of the job for the entire region, and I really appreciate it, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your donation. It's very generous, and thank you for your service. Moving on, we'll open up the first round of public participation. I invite any members of the public that wish to speak on items pertaining to the borough to come forward. Please identify yourself, whether you're a borough resident, and please keep comments to five minutes.
Hi, I'm Jim DeJidio. I am a resident of Hall Street. The item on your agenda tonight, the 345 Walnut Street. I'm here to speak for my neighborhood, and pretty much all my neighborhood, they're not here, but I will speak for them. We're, I went to the worded drawer on this, and everybody will agree with me. We oppose, the plan is written and have, I've been talking to the planning commission all along about it, just on parking, really, when we get right down to it. As it is written, it's unfair to the neighborhood. We have parking difficulties as it is, and the overflow from this apartment, whatever overflow we anticipate, it will just cripple us permanently, if you will. Alls we're looking for, we're, we would love to see the building get developed, but we're looking for two cars per unit. That's, that's all we ask. I would love it if you'd take a second look at this. Tina Peters, the planning commission, I think if you refer to her, the last meeting on this, she even stated that she would fail it for parking if she could. So I think her hands are tied as the ordinance is written, but I think, I think you can look at the ordinance. The last part of the ordinance states, excuse me, the parking demand projections and methodology shall be subject to approval by the borough. I think that gives you a little leeway here. I don't think you're tied to this 1.2 cars per unit, which is ridiculous, if we think it's ridiculous, or everybody in the neighborhood agrees. And that just seems to be common sense. So, I could elaborate further if you would like. Yeah, to where, where we got to 1.2, is anybody familiar with the ordinance here? Very well familiar with it? It was two till last year, right, for a mid-rise apartment building? Just as everybody else in the whole area, every town and borough in the area has two or above. 1.2 seems more fitting for an urban area or Philadelphia or something. I don't, and I don't think, we're, we're far from urban over on Hall and Walnut Streets. We have one-way streets, one-side parking, we don't have the space left as it is. And again, this will cripple us, so please, keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members, mayor. My name is Ken Buckwalder, and I live at 1117 Ross Lane, here in the borough. I'm here tonight to oppose council's possible decision to abolish the recreation board. Since the establishment of this board in 1961, the recreation board has been a recommending body to borough council for maintenance, equipment, operations, and supervision of borough parks, playgrounds, playfields, and other outdoor and indoor recreation areas and facilities owned by the borough of Phoenixville. Allowed to function in the coming year, the seven volunteer members of the recreation board will help make recommendations on how almost the half-million-dollar recreation fund will be spent. They do this without pay. Their talents and times these volunteers bring to our community is invaluable. This past weekend, we saw the power of volunteers. We saw the power of community. To abolish the board would be taking a little heart out of Phoenixville and the talents these people bring to the table. Please consider a vote to oppose the abolishment of the recreation board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buckwalder.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Pound, 326 Dayton Street. I would also like to speak to the matter of the rec board ordinance consideration. I serve at the pleasure of the borough on more than few committees and boards, not the least of which is the rec board. I've served as its chairman for the last few years, and have been a member for longer, perhaps, than some of you, some of you have even lived in Phoenixville. A few weeks ago, I replied to an email sent by Mike Kuzner, asking for my input on some concerns presented by Borough Council. In that reply, I indicated that I saw no reason not to combine the rec board and Parks and Rec Committee. In the intervening weeks, I began to believe that against all odds, I could be wrong. The passion with which the current members and some members of the community have voiced their opinion to the proposed ordinance change is sincere and heartfelt, and as chairman, I have a duty to support and encourage those members. In its original incarnation, the Phoenixville Recreation Board oversaw and coordinated programs for three communities. As our neighboring towns remove themselves from the organization, its scope changed to a supportive role. Who among you would spend three to four months planning and organizing the Halloween parade? Who among you will sit in Reeves Park during Dogwood or downtown during First Fridays, pitching the programs offered by the rec department? Which council members will chaperone teen dances at the Civic Center? Will any of you volunteer to call bingo games, pass out pizza slices, or set up games and stages for any of the myriad events for which the rec department is responsible? The people in this room who serve on the recreation board have been doing all of those things, and some, as like Janet Hunter and Ed Lancy, more so than others. The rec board in and of itself spends no money, has no budget, makes no demands on the director or her staff. We simply offer advice when asked and help when needed. We keep minutes which are available to anyone who asks to see them. Having lived in the borough for over 26 years, I have seen on more than one occasion, this body arrive at conclusions and make decisions without having all the facts. It's in the nature of small-town government and politics. I urge those of you on this council who are supporting removal of the rec board to table the motion for now. Attend some of our meetings and see what we do. Ask questions, get answers. If after doing so, you still believe that the board serves no purpose and that the Parks and Recreation Committee can and will handle all that we do, dissolve the board. The residents of Phoenixville deserve no less.
Thank you, Mr. Pound.
My name is Virginia Murphy, also known as Ginger Murphy. I live at 222 Church Street, 10-year resident of Phoenixville, and I'm a volunteer for our Phoenixville Town Watch. And I am here to advocate once again for the addition of a 29th officer to our police department. And I've made a point to try to listen to the discussion as it's unfolded, because I realize that come budget time, a lot of decisions have to be made and needs met with limited resources. I have found myself pretty puzzled by some of the discussion as it's unfolded. In particular, the suggestion, and I have no problem with being created, but one of the suggestions was for a part-time position to free up officers presumably to be on the street more. It sounded like a good idea, but what puzzled me as somebody who was listening was that my understanding was that members of the police department had not even been, the chief in particular consulted in, would this position help as it's proposed? What would that really mean in terms of allocation of resources in the department toward putting feet on the street and making this community safer? I was just really puzzled about how that unfolded. Back in 2006, there was a study of the needs of the police department with anticipated growth, and there was a map for adding officers over time, and the council at that time made a commitment to doing that. And if that commitment had been followed through on, we would have a 29th officer by now. That was seven years ago, and I, I feel really puzzled by that, because that's been really mapped out. Now, since then, the town has grown, and that means the work of the police department has increased. It's exciting to be here now. It's exciting to be part of this town. But certainly on Town Watch, we hear a lot about the concerns that people bring to us about safety. And one of the things that sticks in my mind that I, I heard in a discussion that I had with an officer, was how the addition of this particular officer would allow the department to go from being reactive, that is, trouble happens and you respond, which is certainly part of the job, to being proactive, to doing community policing, to creating relationships that hopefully prevent problems. And at Town Watch, we're all about prevention and educating the community, simple things like turning on your light, knowing your neighbors. That's really important work. So is law enforcement, intervening when there is a problem. But also a part of law enforcement is creating the relationships, having the bike cop down on the street, talking to people, talking to kids before they get into trouble. So, I really feel, as somebody who's sat in some meetings and who's listened to these discussions, confused about why with the information that we have, we're not making this decision to invest. I'm really excited that the VFW made the presentation that they did, and they're investing in the police department. We've had a possibility or a suggestion that maybe we hire the officer halfway through the year. That would be a smaller investment, but it would get us moving in that direction. I think that that's a constructive way to look at it, and I just, I have some real concerns about the discussion as well as the decision. And I don't, I've said this before, that I don't want to wait until we have real problems and dire statistics to go ahead and hire that officer. I want to be able to walk these streets and feel safe. And to me, as a resident, I'm willing to make that investment, and I've talked to a lot of other people who are too. So I urge you to consider adding a 29th officer, maybe halfway through the year, if that helps us with the budget allocation and the decisions that you all need to make. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, the mayor, President of Council, Council people, and other dignitaries. I'm here tonight to give you a report on the results of your lack of support of the police department. We've had, in my neighborhood, Cemetery Lane, we had 10 break-ins in the, in the end of November, right around Thanksgiving. One of my neighbors, I, they asked me about it. I said, "Call the police, report it." One of the neighbors reported, when he was talking to whoever he was talking to, they said there were 20 car break-ins. Now, that's 20 that were reported, so we don't know how many actually happened. Also, we've had an armed robbery. It wasn't exactly in Phoenixville, but it's close enough, Washington and Nutt. I mean, what, what do you want? Also, we also had a problem with a wooden bird. You mean this town can't protect a wooden bird? Now, my neighborhood is very concerned about what's going on. Five years ago, we had four, actually, yeah, it was four, five houses, four landlords. They caused, their tenants caused havoc, and particularly with the car break-ins. Car break-ins were rampant up there. Plus, we won't go into the drugs and everything else. I don't, we don't want to return to that. We want you to support the police department. We don't want this town to have a reputation that can't protect a wooden bird. I mean, follow the example of the VFW, and do the right thing. Support the police. Thank you very much for your time.
I live at 500 West Anderson. Excuse my voice. I was out in the rain for 10 hours at the firebird, so, helping rebuild. I wanted to talk about the rec board tonight. When we look at other townships and burrows, they would be so grateful to have a group of concerned citizens who are willing to come out every month and give their time freely for the betterment of their community. This is a really important thing that we've done here in Phoenixville that we This is a really important thing that we've done here in Phoenixville that we've created. And if you were to go to other borough councils and say, "Hey, we have these great people who come and work for nothing and help put on awesome events, and we're thinking of telling them to get lost," they would say, "Are you crazy?" That is not how you treat people who have been doing this for a very long time. There are issues, I get it. I've heard from some of you directly. They can be fixed. You can put in metrics, you can put in procedures, but there is no reason, first of all, to combine this, because you don't get more efficiency when you have a bigger group of people. You get longer meetings, you get more arguments, and you get less consensus. And I do this for a living. I train boards, so I know what I'm talking about. And we say, "Limit them, the number." I think the idea that Mr. Pound brought up, table this for now, that was similar to what I said last time I was here. Give it six months or a year, put in the metrics, follow up, see what they do. But to do this against the opposition of so many of us that you're hearing from at this point would really feel that council was just ignoring the community on this for their own willful judgment on something, and that feels very wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Longo.
My name is Shane Delarth. I'm a member of the Parks and Rec Board and the Parks and Rec Committee, actually, the rec board, Parks and Rec Committee for clarification. I've been on both boards since May 2014, so I'm kind of a newbie. But I've also been involved in the community for a long time, probably since I moved to Phoenixville in 2006. I'm a member of the J.C.'s, I'm involved with the Dogwood Festival. I'm here to speak tonight about the decision to repeal the ordinance establishing the rec board. I think I can speak on behalf of my other board members, saying that we're a little blindsided in our November meeting. It was an October meeting when we found out about the original vote, because it really just came out of the blue to us. We didn't know anything about it, and then suddenly there were other members of council there to kind of, you know, sit in with us and actually see what we do. I'm of the opinion, granted, I've only been with it for six months, that I think the two committees are definitely different. I think they serve different purposes. I could see how they could work better and closely, and more closely together. But in response to the vote, I decided to start an online petition to ask council to repeal their vote or vacate their vote. Since late November, I'm sorry, we were able to get over 100 petitions or 100 signatures online, and I was just given now over 50 physical signatures. Basically, I just disagree with the October vote, because I think it could have been handled a little more smoothly. I think it could have been a little more streamlined. There could have been some more communication between the two groups to find out where we do meet in the middle and, you know, where we can work more closely together. So if I may, could I submit the signatures to you, Mr. Council President? Thank you.
Thank you.
Leo Scoda, 312 Virginia Avenue, and I did want to take time to speak on behalf of the rec board. I first started working the summer tennis program in 1966, and I've worked every year since then. And believe me, I have not had any serious problems dealing with the Phoenixville Rec Board. I think these have always been a group of very dedicated people, people that are interested in sports and recreation within the borough of Phoenixville, and be the fact that they're volunteers over the years. They've committed their time and their energy and their effort to see that we have a successful recreation program. To give you a little history, and maybe I'm the one here that can go back about all this history, and I saw things mentioned in the paper that just weren't true. First of all, back when I started working for the rec board, it was a combination of the school district and the borough of Phoenixville, and the school district appointed about half of the members of the rec board, and the borough appointed the other half. And the deal was that the borough provided facilities, the school board would pay for the instructors. So if there were summer playground instructors, the check for those people came through the school board. Now, somewhere around 1980, the school board decided it was costing them too much money, about $60,000, and they pulled out. Up until that time, we had tried and tried to get the townships to participate and absolutely would not. They felt that their money going to the school taxes was enough, but of course, as you and I know, township people use our facilities a lot tremendously, and yet, even today, they don't really pay a fair share. When the school board pulled out, we reached an agreement with East Pikelet that they would be part of it for a contribution of $10,000 a year, which was sometimes hard to get from them. Sometimes it would take a year and a half before the money would actually come in. But for that $10,000, they were given three members on the rec board, and as time went on, people started to get dissatisfied with the fact that they weren't really contributing and they didn't really deserve three. And what came out of that eventually was the new rec board, which is what you have constituted right now, which is a board made up all of Phoenixville citizens and who are appointed by the borough council and have a council liaison, who is the person who interacts between the rec board and the council itself. Now, the other thing is, it seemed like in the newspaper articles, everything was about the Halloween parade, which does take a lot of work. But if you think that's the only thing that the people on the rec board do, you just haven't been around this community long enough. I'll cite an example of what happened back around 1977. The Army Hospital decided to close up. The Army's hospital had tremendous recreational facilities out there. They had a nine-hole golf course, they had a theater, they had a swimming pool, they had bowling alleys, they had a playground, they had miniature golf set up out there, and they never bothered the people of the community about using it. As long as their Army, you know, wasn't directly involved, you can go out there and you can use those facilities. So when they decided to close, the borough, through the recreation department, tried to keep that open. For one year, we tried to keep it open to make those facilities available to the community. We approached Schuco, we approached East Pikelet, we approached Charleston. None of them would give us any help. We kept the pool open, mostly through volunteers. People could go out there, have a family swim at night, because we knew, once you close that pool and you let it sit there for a year, it was done because of the piping and that, that's in the maintenance there. The golf course eventually went bad, but something good came out of that. Eventually, they produced the soccer club out there, and that's where the soccer fields are for the most part. But the volunteers that were out there running it weren't the borough council people. They were the people that were sitting on the rec board, that were taking their own evenings and were out there and collect the dollar from people going into the swimming pool. So you have a dedicated group of people right now that are so interested in recreation in this community. And it also ties in with the quality of life of the community, because we are kind of a sports-oriented community who loves it, sports. And the fact that it doesn't matter is that you have kids that are, you keep kids busy, they're not on the streets, they're not causing trouble, they're not committing vandalism, and it all ties in with that one big packet. So my suggestion to you would be to not, there's no financial gain, there's no real purpose in doing away with this rec board. Leave it as it is. You have good people on the board, you have volunteers. I've been involved with them for just about 50 years, and believe me, if I had any complaints, I'd be here telling you about it right now. So your decision, but I think you look at the whole big picture and realize that this is a good thing to have. Thank you.
David Sannick, Borough Resident. Two items. Number one, I'll just voice my support for maintaining the rec board as it is. Number two, regarding item F, Policy Committee, where they're going to vote for a public Will there be, is the criteria out yet for what will allow for telecommunication attendance at Borough Council meetings, or is that to be posted after tonight? Or what are the, has that been, what are the criteria that someone would not be here but attend essentially by, I assume Skype or some kind of computer attendance? After you vote on it tonight, is that it? Do you have any, has it been discussed, or you want to wait till then? All right, that was my two concerns. Thank you. Have a good night.
My name's Pat Naddle, and I'm a member of the Phoenixville Area Recreation Board. In January of 1970, Joe Fabian, who was president of the council, approached me and asked me if I wanted to be a member of the recreation board. I said, "Yeah, Joe, I'll give it a try." I said, "How long?" He said, "It's four years." "You're in for four years." Here I am, 44 years later, I'm still on the board. It's the good Lord spared me in January to be 45 years, and I love being on the Phoenixville Recreation Board. I like giving back to the town, and I just love Phoenixville. I'm not too much of a speaker, but I just hope that council, you know, changes their mind a little bit about, you know, keeping the recreation board the way it is, because right now, we have an excellent chairman, we've got an excellent recreation director, and we've got excellent board members. These guys are here every month. We never have, we never cancel no meetings because we don't have a quorum. We're always there. And I think about, three years ago, I think Mr. Bowers brought up at the council meeting that they're going to build a ball field on the north side. And I think you made the motion to name the ball field after me for all my years of service on the recreation board, and now you want to take me off it. I mean, what's your game plan? I mean, first, you want me on building the ball field. By the way, when is the ball field going to be done? I mean, is it still in play? Are you still going to build the ball field? Are you going to name that ball field when I'm dead or when I'm alive?
Mr. Naddle, if you can...
Oh, okay. Well, I just want everybody to know that what you did, you know. One hand you say, "That's good," and next hand you say, "No." And that's all I have to say, Mr. President, and the recreation board doesn't get paid a penny, right? Planning commission gets $50 a month, zoning board gets $50 a month. Forty-four years, I never received one penny, and I don't want anything, because I love giving back to the community. But if you decide to pay the recreation board, I want to, could you retract me back to January of 1970? Thank you. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Naddle.
My name is Janet Hunter, and I want to say thank you to each and every one of you for being here. I appreciate what you do for the borough. I've been a rec board member since 2008. I've been a volunteer since 1980. I've been on the Parks and Rec Committee since 2012, and I attended meetings for one year before that, before I was asked to join. The rec board consists of seven public members, one council member, and staff. The Parks and Rec Committee consists of four council members, three public members, and staff. As you can see, there is a difference between the two entities. If you look at the makeup of the board versus the committee members, the board has well over 100 years' worth of experience of volunteering for the rec board. The Parks and Rec Committee, I'm not sure. The whole council, I don't know, maybe 20. 20 years we've all been volunteering for the borough, maybe. If you look at the diversity between the two, major differences. If you look at the work done, you've heard a lot of the things that I was already going to say. I won't repeat them, but there's also, we go out and we survey each of the borough parks, and we talk to people who live in those communities and ask them what they would like to see in their community parks, and we bring that back. We talk about league disputes. I'm sure that council members would love to take their time and talk about whether a softball league dispute needs to be settled one way or another. We also are advisors to the preschool director, the CTC Committee, which, do you guys even know what CTC is? We also help to research grants. We also seek out donations so that it helps with your budget for new equipment, for the support of summer camps, for scholarships for students to go to different programs. Monthly, we receive in our packet for the board minutes of the previous meeting, an agenda of the things that we're going to discuss, and financial reports, which are purely informational. Being on the committee, I receive an agenda and information about community events. Looking at the volunteer time, we've talked about it. We're asked all the time by the staff to help out with different things, because there's not much staff at the civic center. There always has to be someone in the building, and so if there is, say, a playoff game for softball and someone needs to be there to present the trophy to the winning team, one of us would do that on behalf of the rec board and the recreation department. Have any of you been called to help out in any way like that? As we look at the ability to direct staff to do their job, the recreation board has no ability to direct staff to do their job. You have that ability. Looking at voting, which we've talked about in both the board, if we were to come onto the council, the voting would be different for the board members versus the committee members, I'm sorry, the council members. So my question is, as you move forward, do you have a game plan on how you see both entities, which are different, combining into one? And what kind of communication are you going to use to make sure that this happens? But mostly, I encourage you to listen to your community. These are the people that you represent that have come out to speak to you, and I ask you to overturn your previous decision to repeal the borough ordinance and allow the rec board to continue to do the good works that it does for the Phoenixville community. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further public participation, we'll close that round of public participation and move on with the agenda. Item six, appointments and public resolutions. Again, I just want to remind everyone at home and in the audience that there is constantly rolling openings on various boards and commissions of the borough. So if anyone has interest, please contact the borough about those potential openings. Mr. Prednik?
I just want to add that even if you are interested and you contact the borough, please come to the police personnel
please come to the Police Personnel and Safety Meeting, express your interest there, too.
Moving on to item seven, Council Communication and Participation. Seeing nothing, we'll move on. Mr. Bowers?
Thank you, Council President. I guess just to generally address those that spoke about the Rec. Board, I would just say that, you know, it was likely a difficult decision to deal with when it became apparent that the borough was going to undertake the consolidation of the fire departments as well. I'm sure for many, it was a difficult decision to comprehend that the borough was going to undertake a competitive bid for EMS services in the borough. Those were necessary changes in the end, and I think will help to guide the borough going forward. And I think it needs, you need to consider that that is part of what Council is contemplating, where we go in the future. Thank you.
Seeing nothing further, moving on to new business. What is Council's pleasure with regard to A?
I'd like to make a motion to schedule and advertise 2015 meetings of Council and Committees.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Prednik, second by Mr. Dalton. On the motion, Mr. Crack. Mr. Crack is just pointing out that as of right now, Recreation Board is still on there, but it would be potentially removed, depending on what happens later on in this meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Ms. Mayo?
Aye.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm. Motion carries eight-zero. What is Council's pleasure with regard to item B?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2015 Borough-Phoenixville budget.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bowers, second by Ms. Dugan. On the motion, seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Ms. Mayo?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Item nine, Resolutions. Item A under there, what is Council's pleasure with regard to that?
I'd like to make a motion to consider a resolution eliminating member payments to the Police Pension Plan Fund for the calendar year of 2014.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kuznar, second by Mr. Dalton, to approve a resolution eliminating member payments of the Police Pension Plan Fund for calendar year 2014. On the motion, Mr. Prednik?
I just have a question maybe from Mr. Crack. Just wanted to get understanding, does this mean that the police will pay zero into their pension plans? And does the borough pick up that amount?
That's correct. There's a gap of $344,000 that we, that's our minimum municipal obligation under Act 600. Also in the Act, if it is Council's pleasure, or there are other restrictions on that, in this case, there is a, an agreement between the union and the borough that was agreed to previously in 2013 that stipulates that there would be no additional contribution. So the borough will transfer $134,909 into the pension plan for the uniform, for the uniform.
And was this included in the 2015 budget?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Richter?
I just wanted to say that I think this shows our continued support and commitment to the existing Phoenixville Police Department, and I'm proud to support this item.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Ms. Mayo? Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. With respect to item B, what is Council's pleasure?
Make a motion to approve the resolution to revise the master schedule of fees for 2015, including changes to the water fee and trash fee.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bowers, second by Mr. Dalton. On the motion, Mr. Prednik?
I just noticed that there was a line item under the storm water management. It was marked as zero in fees. Mr. Crack, is that intentional?
Yes, sir. The, it's inevitable that there will be those fees. This is a place marker in the fee schedule, so the zero dollar amount is just to make sure that we, when the time comes, will have a place to put that.
And will that require amendment at that time?
Yes, it would.
Thank you.
Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Moving on to item 10, Public Hearings. There are two public hearings on the agenda for tonight. I will entertain a motion to open either public hearing at this point.
I'd like to make a motion to consider the opening public hearing for consideration of the ordinance setting the millage for real estate property, or real estate property for the year 2015.
Second.
That's item B. Motion by Mr. Prednik, second by Mr. Bowers. On the motion to open the public hearing, any comment?
Which public hearing did you open?
The second one.
Okay, sorry.
Item B.
Thank you.
Seeing no comment, all those in favor to open the public hearing? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. I will open up the public hearing at 8:01 and ask the solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. President. We only have two exhibits enter into evidence today for this public hearing. The first would be the advertisement that ran the mercury on December 1st, and the second would be marked, first would be marked Borough's Exhibit 1, and the second would be the ordinance itself marked Borough's Exhibit B.
In a moment, we'll open up a round of public participation strictly on the item before Council, which is the ordinance setting the millage for real property for the year 2015. Once public participation is completed, we'll have Council participation and then move forward. I'll open up the public participation on this item. If anyone has any comments, I ask them to come forward, identify themselves, sign in, and please keep comments to five minutes.
David Sannick, what is the millage?
It is, I believe, 525. It's unchanged from the current.
It's unchanged?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
And any further public participation? Seeing none, I will close the public participation at 8:02 and open up Council participation. Any Council comment? Mr. Prednik?
I just wanted, this is my first year on Council, and I'm actually excited at the fact that we're able to do so much with the budget, and yet there's no tax increase. Growing up in California, I heard tax increases all the time, and everywhere else I've been, there's always tax increases. So I just, you know, kudos to my fellow Council members. I think we did a pretty good job achieving what we did with no increase.
Mr. Richter?
I would also like to say a big part of that is the departing Steve Neese, and it's been a pleasure working with you, Mr. Neese, for this first year through the budget for myself. I appreciate all the long hours and hard work that you put into it, especially with dealing with the wants and needs of eight of us and thousands of citizens. So thank you.
Any further comment on the Council participation? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Mr. Richter, second by Mr. Bowers to close the public hearing. On that motion, seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero, with Mr. Dalton out of the room. What is Council's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the millage for real property for the year of 2015 at 5.25 miles.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Richter, second by Ms. Dugan. On the motion, seeing no comment, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll make a motion to open up a public hearing for the ordinance amendment to repeal Chapter 1, Part 4(c) Recreation Board of the Code of Ordinances of the Borough of Phoenixville.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Richter, second by Mr. Dalton. On that motion, seeing any comment? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries seven-one, six-two, with Ms. Dugan and myself opposing it. I'll turn it over to the solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, we only have two exhibits to enter into evidence. The first would be the advertisement that was run the mercury on December 1st, marked Borough's Exhibit A, and the second would be the ordinance itself marked Borough's Exhibit
Same rules as the last public hearing. We'll have a public participation followed by Council participation. I will open up public participation on this public hearing. If any members of the public wish to come forward and comment, I just ask that you identify yourself, sign in, and please keep your comments to five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Janet Hunter. I live on Wilson Street in Phoenixville. First off, I would like to say to Dana Dugan, thank you so much for all the time and energy and enthusiasm that you have brought to the Rec. Board these past couple of years. We really truly appreciate it. To the rest of you, I just ask that you please consider the over 150 signatures that we received and given to you, and also to the eight people who spoke up tonight, and to those who spoke up last month. I'm not sure how many there were for that, but that you consider keeping the Rec. Board the way that it stands. Thank you.
Edens Soto, 7th High Street. I'm not going to take up a lot of time. I think it's pretty clear that, I spoke last month with regards to even having this public hearing, which I oppose, and I think it's pretty clear that the support of the Rec. Members, Rec. Members are here to speak for themselves. A lot of members of the community have spoken about this. If you vote in favor of this, you are, in essence, voting against what the community wants. Just remember that that is what's being presented on record. I don't think that is necessary for me to even speak on what my position is, because I think the community has spoken. So keep that in mind when you vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soto. Seeing no further public comment, I will close the public participation portion at 8:07 and open up Council participation. Ms. Dugan?
I just have the same statement that was made earlier by Mr. Buckwalter. He wanted me to read it into this part when it's officially the public hearing, so. He says that he's here tonight, well, he was here tonight, "to oppose Council's possible decision to abolish the Recreation Board here in Phoenixville. Since the establishment of this Board in 1961, the Recreation Board has been a recommending body to Borough Council for maintenance, equipment, operations, and supervision of Borough parks, playgrounds, playfields, and other outdoor and indoor recreation areas and facilities owned by the Borough of Phoenixville. Allowed to function in the coming year, the seven volunteer members of the Recreation Board will help to make recommendations on how the almost half-million-dollar recreation fund will be spent. They do this without pay. The talents and time these volunteers bring to our community is invaluable. This past weekend, we saw the power of volunteers. We saw the power of community. To abolish the Board would be taking a little heart out of Phoenixville and the talents these people bring to the table. Please consider a vote to oppose the abolishment of the Recreation Board." Thank you.
Any further comment from Council?
I'll make my own comment, then. I'm just, I don't know how to convey how strongly I feel about this issue. This is a group of people that are very, very dedicated. They bring so much to the borough, and trying to combine them, if you wanted to combine them, you need a plan. What you're, what we're voting on right now is to absolutely eliminate the Rec. Board. It goes away. We can say, they can come to the Parks and Rec. meeting, but the thing is, we don't know exactly how that's going to work. There is no plan there. There's no plan on paper. No one's heard it. And I honestly, I think that's a bad idea, too, because their votes wouldn't count the same way they do on Rec. Board. But I just really hope that you'll reconsider the opinion that I know a lot of you have, but I just think that this is a very bad direction that we're heading in.
Ms. Richter?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think there's been a lot of misinformation out in the, in the public realm, especially on social media. We definitely heard some of that misinformation given again tonight at the podium. What I would challenge each and every one of us sitting up here and sitting out in the audience to do is to think about, what is the best way not to just stay with the status quo and be happy with what we have right now, but to move ourselves forward? We have a lot of people who've been here for a long time, but we also have a lot of new people coming into town, and how do we pique their interest? How do we get them involved in the recreation activities that we provide and the beautiful parks that we have in this borough? I think the best answer to that, and what I've heard in this whole project and scope of work that we've been talking about, is by allowing staff to do the things that are directed by a single entity. Call it the Parks and Rec. Committee, call it the Rec. Board, call it whatever you want. There's a significant sharing of resources, sharing of ideas, but ideas that are separate and never together, and I think that that's really what's holding us back. We don't have a single unison voice and an effort to provide the director of Parks and Rec. with any one mota, soporondi, and I think that also trickles the whole way up to the manager. Different people are saying different things, and there's not one unified voice. There's never been a question of who wants to work more and who wants to contribute more. Everybody wants to contribute. There's no, that's not lost on me, and I don't think that's lost on anyone else up here. Everybody's just in this for the best interests of Phoenixville, and I think that's what matters. And it's not about making it so people don't have voices. There's all sorts of ways you can have a voice, and if you want to be a volunteer, you don't need a board to do that. We saw that up at the Friendship Field this weekend. Very few of those people, I believe, were on committees and boards. I spent two hours up there just kind of watching, and I think that if you were up there, you would echo that. It was a lot of community members coming together, not necessarily board members. It doesn't take a board to make things happen. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Prednik?
So I mean, I've heard a lot of people say that, you know, they're looking volunteer, they want to participate, they want to be part of the community, they want to be there. But at the same time, I hear that, you know, if you take away the Rec. Board, you're taking away their vote. So I'm just curious to understand, you know, the people's opinion is that you feel like we're trying to take away your vote? It's not like we're trying to take away anybody's power. We're trying to make people be part of another group, a more effective group, that can more effectively communicate with Council, with departments, and get their opinions across, rather than putting another step in the process of going through the Rec. Board, allowing the public to come to Parks and Rec. so that they can voice their opinions and make them directly available to Council. We have Rec. Board, but we don't have a Streets. Board. We don't have an Administration. Board. Why do we need a board for another department? We have a Rec. Department. Let them do the job that they need to do. We have the Parks and Rec. Committee. Let them, that committee do the job it needs to do. Mr. Richter has graciously extended invitations to all the Rec. Board Committee members, to all members of the public to come and speak, to share their opinions. I believe he's been more than fairly open in the committee to hear the public and their opinion. There's been 109 votes online. There was votes, not votes, sorry, there was a petition signed with signatures. There were signatures turned into here. Whose signatures are those? Was that opinion of the people that are in favor of it? Where are the people that are in favor of the other side? Have their opinions been silenced? We haven't seen them come here, but there's got to be two sides to each tale. I've heard this opinion, this discussion for a long time over the last couple of months. I echo Mr. Richter's comments. We need efficiencies in the borough. You don't continue going on the ship the way that you keep going it. You shake the boat a little bit, and that shaking is frustrating to people, and it's difficult to accept that change. But that change brings progress, and that's what we need in our borough. Thank you. change brings progress, and that's what we need in our borough. Thank you.
Any further comments? Ms. Dugan?
The reason that people haven't come to support it is because I'm not hearing that anybody supports the idea of getting rid of the REC board. So, you, the people that have shown, like, if there is somebody that actually was going to come up and say, yeah, what a great idea, maybe there were two sides of the argument. But right now, the only argument is between, is the council members and the people that are on the side that I'm on. So, that's kind of what I think, you're just blind to what the community wants.
Mr. Prednik?
I'd just like to understand, I'm not blind to what the community wants. I've read the comments out there, understand what they want. My question is just, are they misinformed? Is the information that they're getting, is, is it wrong? Because it clearly is. Some of the things that they stated tonight were not our intention. We've said every month that our intention is to include it in the REC board. Again, Mr. Richter's extended them to come and be part of the, the Parks and REC Committee. That's not what we heard tonight from the people, and it's not what I see online. It's, the wrong information is being put out there.
Mr. Kuzner?
Just to go on to what Mr. Prednik is referring to, if, if he is referring to the petition where we saw lots of people giving their opinions, that, honestly, I would honor any petition that's put towards me if I felt that both sides of the argument were presented in the petition. But the petition didn't mention that Mr. Richter extended membership to the Parks and REC Committee and that he was offering them a vote on the Parks and REC Committee. And it also said that nobody on council knows what the REC Committee does, which, which isn't accurate. There's plenty of members on council who know what the REC Committee does. It, it just opens up with a statement that is, is, wasn't accurate. So, that's where, you know, we did see a lot of people giving their opinions on social media, but my concern was that they weren't exactly sure what was really being presented to them, because, like I said, the petition, which I admire anyone for making a petition and taking the time to do that, but you have to present both sides. You can't just present only one side of, of what's going on.
Ms. Dugan?
One more thing. I, I feel like this is, you don't, in a petition, you do, you petitioned for your side of an argument. Like, I remember one of the last petitions I saw go down was about the streetscapes, the, the Main Street thing, and a lot of people came, um, one month that, you know, we voted for it, that supported it, and then the next month, a bunch of people came with a petition against it, that you put a petition to, for the side that you're arguing for, and, and people that sign it are signing it to support that position. So, I don't, I mean, I don't understand. And plus, the vote thing, too. At the end of the day, when you're on a board, like, for example, let's use HARB as an example. HARB is a recommending body the same way that the REC Board is. They have a vote. Every one of those people, their vote counts as a recommending body. It goes to council, saying that HARB recommended this much to that much, or whatever. And if you put them on the Parks and REC Committee, their vote doesn't count because of all the council members there. Their votes are the only ones that count, the people that are elected. So, and that's just a committee that, you know, they're, that stuff ends up coming to here, too, but that, it doesn't matter. Like, if they have a vote, it's a vote for show, to make you feel better that you've taken it away from them at REC Board.
So, I guess our opinions on, on a petition can differ, but saying that no members of council knew what the REC Board did, and not even mentioning that we're, our attempt is to combine the Parks and REC with the REC Board, it's, the, the rhetoric is just that we're out to destroy it and get rid of it, and also, the, there's, there's actually members of the community who think that we're getting rid of everything the REC Board does, and we're not even, like, like the Halloween parade and the, and other things that they do. They're actually under the impression that we're getting rid of these things. They don't understand that it's just going to a different committee for those decisions to be made. So, I, I am, I, I was, I definitely took notice of the fact that you had so many signatures in that petition, but it, it opens up with a statement, one saying, I don't know what the REC Board does. I was told earlier I didn't know what Communities of Care is, or CTC. The, this stuff isn't, well, they, I wasn't told I don't know what it is, but I was asked, do you know what that is? I, it's Communities of Care. And also, the, the language opening up in the petition is that we are looking for dissolution, and that doesn't really coordinate with combining. Dissolution is the complete removal and telling everybody to go home, and we don't want your help anymore.
Ms. Dugan?
The problem there is, we don't have a plan. What we're doing right now is voting to eliminate the REC Board, not combine it where there's nothing in this ordinance. It's supposed to be, like, you get rid of that and it's replaced by reserved. So, it isn't replaced by anything. We're just eliminating the REC Board right now. If there was a plan, maybe you could have that argument, but right now, there is no plan.
Mr. Prednik?
I, I think Mr. Richter's fairly eloquently made the plan put out there, and I, one echo Mr. Kuzner said, that's a very good point. I think we're all in favor of what the REC Board has done, what the people have put out there. We, we're not looking to abolish that, we're just looking to bring that to another committee.
Mr. Bowers?
Thank you, thank you, Council President. I, I guess addressing what, you know, the challenges that lie before the Borough Council, the REC Department and the REC Committee are that, you know, we have 16-plus parks. We have, you know, over 300-plus acres of parks. Population's expected to grow, perhaps somewhere in the neighborhood of 20,000 in the next five years. We really need to start focusing on a comprehensive use of parks. And I don't think we're getting that now from the REC Board. I don't think we're getting the types of advice that council needs to make decisions. Yes, I advanced a, a, a motion to dedicate the lands at Dayton, Dayton Street, between Court of Ledges and Ledges, as patinatal fields. It's real, it's very difficult to get there. It requires a lot of money to get it done. But I need, as much as that, I think we need the REC Board's support to really make significant and meaningful improvements to our Parks and Recreation's lands. We have no baseball fields in this borough that a high school team that a, could utilize, that a, there are some fields for, for, you know, Cal Ripken Little League-type play, but, but that's, that system is precarious. That Cal Ripken group has lost more potential players to the surrounding community, as has Babe Ruth. Babe Ruth has not, supported a, a team in district play for a number of years now. I'm very concerned that we're not really paying attention to what the community needs. We have a lot of parklands that we're not utilizing as well as we should. And I think we need the REC Board to step up and start supporting us. If you're representing the community, then help us. We want to put lights on fields. We need your support to do that, because all we've heard is there's going to be opposition. When I came on board, it was quickly apparent that we were going to lose our softball fields at, at, at the Christian College. The REC Board has not advanced any plan to help us recoup from that. Council is taking what action it can to, to overcome that. But we need your support, but you're not, we're not hearing that we're getting support. You're not being an advocate for us to help get our job done and spend capital dollars appropriately where they're needed. The current ordinance just isn't working. It, it's not accomplishing, I think, what is needed. It doesn't accomplish, I think, the type of support that council needs to address, plan for, and provide the types of recreation facilities that we, that the community wants and needs. Basketball, you know, PAPA's a great community organization, but, you know, I've not seen any recommendations come out of REC Board to improve basketball facilities for, to support PAPA. PAPA now support, also advances, has a lacrosse program. You need large fields. You need equipment for lacrosse. We could help, but I, you know, we're not hearing that, we're not hearing from REC Board that those types of, that we could work together to make those types of things happen. I, I think the current ordinance just, it just isn't being fulfilled, and it just isn't achieving what we know as councilmen, we need to plan for going forward.
I have one more thing.
Ms. Richter?
I just have one last comment, Mr. President. I think one of the things that I've heard through separate meetings and committee meetings and council meetings is how we should have demanded and asked for all of the, the reports and the financials and some of the things that Mr. Bowers alluded to. From what I know of, of structures where there's a governing body, the governing body isn't the one that should be requesting documents like that. Those kind of things bubble up, not trickle down. So, I, I don't think that's a good enough reason to say, well, you guys never asked. No, the governing body doesn't have to ask. Those minutes, those, those finances, those plans are given freely. We've never once had an agenda in the 12 months that I've sat in this chair where there has been a Recreation Board liaison make one mention of a connection to what the REC Board is doing in front of the rest of council. So, I just, I agree with Mr. Bowers. We need to take a look at this, decide what it is in particular, if the REC Board is to exist in any particular way, shape, or form, and re-scope it. We can always come back with a new ordinance and say, these are the particular things, because what it was intended to do 50-some years ago, we heard a lot of people that had been on there and been involved for that long, is not necessarily what we want it to do right now. And the only way to change that is by, by doing it this way and putting a new ordinance out there.
Any further comment?
Um, I'm sorry, one more here, but I have been on as the REC Board representative for the last five years. The way that it has always been done is that they handle what they can handle internally, and the council never wanted to see that. I was never asked to do that. That's the way it's been done. If you guys want to change that, I would be perfectly happy to show you all of the stuff that they do with special events and zumba and all of that stuff. I could tell you that, but it's kind of, we deal with so much, it's like you're trying to micromanage it. Like, these are things that don't need to come to council, don't need to be voted on here. That's why you don't see those reports. But if you wanted to, I would be perfectly happy to do that. It's just that nobody ever mentioned, that's how I was trained when I got here, so I just assumed that that's the way it was supposed to go.
Any further comment? Mr. Bowers?
I, you know, I really do view that, you know, council's debate and consideration to redefine the REC Board's purpose is, is courageous. And as I mentioned, you know, there were some tough decisions made by councils to reorganize the fire department, competitively bid EMS services. Those weren't particularly popular, and nor is this decision. But it can produce a better outcome. It can produce a better outcome for the residents of the borough. We have lots of potential in park, Parks and Recs to improve our facilities and to really give the community, a significantly growing community, what it, what it needs. We've taken steps to preserve Friendship Field and do all that we possibly can to retain that piece of land, to continue and create a larger park system, create contiguous parklands. And we have opportunities before us to, again, to create more parkland, more, and, and define, you know, what it is we want to use our, our parks, facilities for. So, I don't view, I view that the decision that we're taking on is, is courageous. It's not an indictment of anyone. It, there are good and dedicated people clearly on the REC Board. But it's, this is a decision to repurpose the talent, experience, and knowledge to achieve a better outcome for the borough in the future, going forward, so that we are in a position to better address the needs of this Phoenixville five years from now, not just today. Thank you.
Any further comment? Mr. Dalton?
I just want to echo Chris's sentiments. I think what he said was, it can't be better, can't be better said.
Wrong button. Any further comment? Well, I'll put my two cents in at this point. Heard a lot of comments back and forth, a lot of good, good, open debate as to what the purpose is, what we should be doing. But in my mind, there's, there's no bones about it. We are dissolving a board. We're getting rid of it. We're throwing it away. I understand the invitation that Mr. Richter has made for those members to come to the Parks and Recs Board, but what I think is being missed is that his appointment is only temporary. The appointments he makes are only temporary. Those individuals, their invitations only stand if Mr. Richter makes them while he's on there. We don't know, I don't know what's going to happen in four years. I don't know who's going to be in this position in four years. I don't know where I'm going to be in four years. Hopefully, I'm still alive. But the purpose is, the purpose of that comment is, we have a REC Board. We have an open invitation for citizens out there that come forward and to be in a structure which allows them to be a part of that for a significant number of years. Being in my third year on council, I've learned that you don't do a lot in a year or two years in, in, in public government. It takes time. You need a longer appointment. You need a vehicle for which to have those views, those comments, those ideas ferment and come forward. The REC Board creates that. Do I think that we need to consider giving them more direction? Because I think that's some of the other comments that I heard, that we haven't heard anything from them. Well, we've never given them direction. That's, this is what we wanted to hear. I think we could repurpose, retool the REC Board as an avenue for citizens to have a voice in this community, which I've heard on numerous occasions by every member of council, is very important. And on that note, we've had numerous individuals speak today and in previous meetings, all in support of the REC Board. I have not heard anyone come up and say, we need to get rid of this. Last month, we, we listened, we entertained comments from a few members on a very small street to spend borough dollars to accommodate the problem that they had. We gave them the full weight of our attention, time, and it swayed opinions because the comment was made, this is what the people are asking for. Well, in my mind, the people that have spoken have asked for the REC Board to continue. That's where I, that's where I am. Change, just for change's sake, yes, change could mean better things. Change could also mean worse things. We don't have the plan in place other than Mr. Richter's comments, that he's going to invite these members to his committee, which, again, is transitory at best. We don't have a plan in place to allow these citizens to continue to provide valuable time, effort, and talent to this borough, and we're going to get rid of that. It just makes no sense to me. I, I think we need to repurpose and retool it, maybe. Give them direction. Let them know exactly what we want from them. We had a very discuss, a very candid discussion with members of the BAC at a recent committee meeting, and that's what came out of it. And everyone left that room, I think, from what I could see, in a better place in the sense that, okay, we know what we're doing. We can add value. We need direction. We're going to get it from council. Why not do the same exact thing with the REC Board and allow that to prosper? Seeing no further comment, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So, move. Motion by Mr. Dalton, second by Mr. Prednik. On the motion to close the public hearing, seeing no comment. All those in favor, aye opposed. Motion carries eight zero. And I'll note for the record that the public hearing was closed at 8:33. Mr. Richter?
I'll make a motion to repeal Chapter One, Part Four C, Recreation Board of the Code of Ordinances of the Borough of Phoenixville.
Second. Motion by Mr. Richter, second by Mr. Dalton. On the motion. Motion by Mr. Richter, second by Mr. Dalton on the motion. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor of repealing the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries five three with Ms. Dugan, myself and Ms. Mayo opposing it. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Very interesting debate. I made a few notes here. For the most part, I believe politicians are well-intentioned, but at times are out of sync and don't listen to the will of the people. I believe this to be one of those occasions. I hear from council that we should listen to the people, but when they speak, now a claim is made that they are basing their decision on misinformation. The Rec Board has been around for over 50 years and has been steadfast. Those of us in these seats come and go. It's clear to me that the overall public opinion is in strong favor of maintaining our Rec Board. Not one, not one member of the public has come and spoken or contacted myself, I don't know if they've contacted you, and said, hey, it's a great idea to eliminate the Rec Board. Not one. Therefore, I feel I would be negligent in my duties if I did not take any action. Therefore, as mayor, I will veto this ordinance as council passed it tonight.
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes.
Thank you. At this point, Mr. Mayor, within ten, at least, what council have to do is this motion, this item will be revisited at the next regular meeting, a special meeting within at least a minimum 10 days or another meeting that council has. If a super majority, as we call it, majority plus one vote to approve this ordinance at that time, then it will be as if it was enacted today when council passed the motion. Mr. Mayor, your objections to the ordinance will be entered as part of the meeting minutes at the next meeting.
Moving on with Mr. Bowers?
Council President, I would like to make a motion to appoint a, a new council liaison to the Parks and, to the, to the Recreation Board.
Second.
Isn't that a council president's privilege?
That's a privilege of the council president to make those appointments.
May we request it as council members?
You can. Yes.
I mean, I think that's, that's three of us at least that have said that, you know, we request that. I mean, if there's any other council members that want to request that as well, I think that's a good idea, Mr. Bowers.
I'm not doing that. Sorry.
If I can just interject, you'd have to, if you wanted to attempt to do that, if all appointments are at the discretion of the president, you have to make a motion to open the agenda, to add an item to the agenda, which would first have to pass. At this point, is my, without even looking at your ordinance, that the president does have the power of appointment and you'd have to make a motion. I would, I would recommend that we, this is something that's, you'd have to, we have to look back at your ordinance and see how appointments are made and it'd be a change in, in the ordinance. So at this point, it would be a motion to amend the ordinance to appoint, to, to have another appointing power other than it stands now. So at this point, it would be my recommendation to, I'm sorry, borough code, excuse me, and it's, it's in your ordinances, I'm sure, the same way. So, at this point, we just, I'd ask that, I would recommend that you just not table any motions at this point.
Mr. Richter?
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to schedule a special meeting on Tuesday, December 16th, for the purposes of this veto discussion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Richter, second by Mr. Prednik. A special meeting on the 16th, and I'm going to assume for the purpose of the motion at 7 o'clock?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Krack?
I'm sorry, it has to be 10 days from the night of tonight's meeting. It's out to be the 19th.
All I can tell you is the last time we had a veto, I, I believe we did the exact same thing, we scheduled it the following Tuesday and, and moved the committee meetings out.
I'm sorry. It's either at least 10 days to a special meeting or the next special, scheduled regular council meeting is what's read in the borough code.
I'll amend my motion until Tuesday, the 23rd.
And that's the second.
And I'll accept the amendment as a second.
So the motion is now for a special council meeting on December 23rd at 7:00?
I just have a quick question. Why is it that we need to have a special council meeting at this point? I thought that if they, I thought she just said that we could wait until the next January meeting. I mean, that's two days before Christmas. Does anybody really want to do that?
I'm guessing there's at least two. Well, we have the motion on the floor, so we have to deal with the motion as it stands. So the motion is to have a special council meeting on the Tuesday, the 23rd of council to address the mayor's veto and any other regular business that may come before council. On that motion, any discussion?
I, I, I don't know if this is appropriate to say right now, maybe I should have said it for executive session, but this, I mean, we all have a system here, if we could all just kind of, you just tried to kick somebody off a board. It's kind of, I, I was never told about this, if the vote doesn't go through, we, I don't know. That was just, left a, left a bad taste in my mouth. I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. President, I mean, clearly, if the purpose of the meeting is simply to discuss the mayor's veto, it can surely wait till after the holidays to the next regularly scheduled meeting. I wouldn't anticipate anything to change, quite frankly. Thank you.
Any further comment on the motion? I just, I, I agree with the mayor, I think this is something that can wait until January. I don't think we need to have it on a busy week, busy holiday week, which I'm sure a lot of us have personal obligations that week. I know I do, myself. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor of scheduling a special borough council meeting on December 23rd at 7:00 PM?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Motion passes five three, so there will be a special council meeting on the 23rd at 7:00. And I ask staff to properly advertise that.
For Ms. Dugan, Ms. Mayo or yourself?
Moving on with Item 11, Planning Commission? All right. Seeing no action on the Planning Commission? Regional planning?
If I may, have the opportunity to turn back to Item, Item A under Planning? Is that, is that where we are?
Yes.
Okay. Would like to make a motion to consider a resolution for final approval of the land development plan for 345 Walnut Street. Make a note that the Planning Commission recommended approval in their action memo dated November 26, 2014, by a vote of six to one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bowers, second by Mr. Dalton on the motion. I have a question regarding the parking. I don't know if there was a parking study that was done for this?
No, sir, there was, as it relates to, there was a, there was a study, I believe, as it relates to the old ordinance, but not as it relates to the new ordinance. The information, the, the engineer is here, he can explain exactly what was done. I know the Planning Commission did ask for some, some information, so I would defer to the engineer to explain exactly what they did, if you would be inclined.
Good evening, my name is Michael Kissinger with Pinoni Associates, representing the Zane Partners, Kenny Knox and Chris Potter Joy are here as well, if further questions I can't answer. Basically, what we did is a trip generation based on the ordinance, which refers to the ITE manual for low and mid-rise apartment buildings. At our first meeting, what we did is, the first time we came through, we actually called it an urban facility, which had public transit and other similar facilities. And in that ITE manual, it refers to 1.2 vehicles per dwelling unit, which is, you know, in compliance with the way the code was written. Speaking with Mr. Ott and staff, basically, we changed that description to suburban, which made it 1.23 vehicles per dwelling unit. And again, in line with the ordinance, we, we did provide those, those units. So I believe, and Mr. Krack, I believe that it does refer to the new ordinance, if I'm correct, the way the ITE manual is referenced in the ordinance?
That's correct.
Yes. So we have 23 new apartments and 29 total spaces on the property.
29 onsite on the property itself?
Yes.
Mr., Mr. Prednik?
If you can elaborate a little bit, I know that there was three waivers requested. There was waiver of, waiver to not provide an impact statement, waiver not to provide a sewer feasibility report, and a waiver to not provide a hydrogeology study. I'm just curious to understand, why do you guys feel that you need a waiver?
If I go backwards there, the hydrology study is typically something you do for geology if you were to do infiltration for stormwater on your property. We are not doing stormwater, or we're not doing infiltration, conveying the land, the site is largely impervious. So it's just something that didn't apply to this development. The impact study, basically, we did provide a, a impact, a letter, if you will, talking about the use and how it is broken up. So it's just a, I guess I'll say a partial waiver. And sewer feasibility, again, it's, a lot of times if you're putting onlot systems, you want to take a water conservation. So basically, again, it's just something that didn't apply to this since we're using public sewer.
Mr. Prednik?
So I, I respect your opinion as, as the engineer for the firm. There's always two sides to a story. I, I'm not in favor of the idea that we're just granting waivers in a way from hearing one side of the story. I would like to hear our borough engineer's side of it and hear what his take if, if these are truly not necessary. I'm, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know. But, you know, I would think if the hydrogeology study is not needed, then the hydrology engineer would say, there's no study needed, and we would have that report. We have infrastructure we've put in place for sewer and water, we have roads that we've put in place. I, I think having those studies, we've said before at different council and infrastructure meetings, will help us understand and improve our roads. We need those studies, they help us make better decisions. I'm just not in favor of approving something that has all these waivers attached to it. And it's a good plan, you guys have a good idea, just I don't understand why we need waivers.
It simply is, if I, if I can speak, is that not all of the code provisions apply to every project. And in this case, it is our opinion, and I agree with you on that, that everybody has one of the, an opinion, but it is in our opinion that these three do not apply to the type of development that we're performing. So, to the extent that the ordinance requires, and hence why we're asking for the waivers.
Mr. Bowers?
It, it is unfortunate that we don't have our borough engineer present to, to comment, but I would say, to that end, he did certainly review the requests for, for waiver. The PC, in the end, included it in their action memo and approved it six to one with not, with, with no objection made by the, as to my knowledge, the borough engineer. Perhaps manager?
Typically, what happens with our, through our Planning Commission is, in fact, that our planner and our engineer review all of the requested waivers, all of the, the various items in there. And there's, if you, if you look in your packet, you'll see the letter from the engineer and you'll see the letter from Mr. Ott. I would fairly comfortably say that there, that the engineer has commented on whether that waiver was, was satisfactory to the borough. That's usually what's required before the Planning Commission will sign off. I don't have the letter in front of me, but if Mr. Kissinger has the letter, maybe he can specifically state what the borough engineer said to those three items?
I don't see the letters here.
Yeah, we're looking at letters from Remington and Vernick dated November 5th. Basically, it just says item, it just says that the applicant is requesting it, he does not comment one way or the other.
Yeah, I mean- I'm sorry, I, I'm getting a little bit of a bad connection. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, it was a little fuzzy on this side. So, I just wanted to put this out there, that this is my neighborhood. I live about a block and a half away from this particular property. And whether or not they meet the requirements for parking or not, it's ridiculous to do this to this neighborhood. We all know that two, two, at least two people with two different cars are going to move into each one of these units. And having those additional cars on such an incredibly packed street to begin with is going to absolutely kill this neighborhood. I live not too far away, like I said, and the parking situation is the same on my side of the street. We only have one side parking and there is nowhere to park at all, pretty much anytime we come home. And I know it's going to be the same down there and, and even more, and even worse, rather, when, when something like this goes in. And I know, I know that, you know, most of the council members, you know, live on, on streets that have assigned parking or, you know, maybe garages or parking on both sides of the street. Not many of you live on, on, on a street like this. And it's absolutely deplorable to do this to some, to do this to an already jam-packed street, and it will really kill the neighborhood. It really affects the quality of life, even for myself. I have to drive around two different pla, two different parking lots that I have to drive around to if I can't find a spot on the street and move my car before the next, before business starts in the morning, most of the time. And I know that it's like that, going to be like that down there in that neighborhood, in that part of the neighborhood as well. So whether they meet the parking requirements or not, that's not the case here. The case is that this is already a jam-packed neighborhood and it's going to completely kill this neighborhood. And I'm, I'm just hoping that, that, you know, I know that some, some, at some point, something else will come along and something will happen, something else will happen in this building. Yes, I understand that there's something, that there's a plan for this building now, and the building is in terrible shape and something needs to be done with it, but that's not the point. The point is, is that we need to think about the parking down there. It's going to kill the neighborhood even more than it is already. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayo. Mr. Prednik?
I would just like to ask this listener, I had a resident call me the other day, you know, mentioned some concerns that if this was not going to go through, we could face potential legal action. I don't know how much of that can be discussed on the floor, but is there, from a legal or from a solicitor perspective, is there a reason that this has to be approved or signed off today? I mean, if this gets delayed another month or two?
It does not need to be approved today, depending, when was, when was the date of the application?
Mr. Kissinger, as I recall, I believe the applicant granted a, an extension of time without, without that document sitting in front of me, I apologize for that. Is the applicant able to tell us what date he gave to the- Is the applicant able to tell us what date he gave to the?
It's through the end of December. Through the end of December.
That's what I thought. That would mean that you would have to take action either tonight or December 23rd.
December 23rd. Yeah.
Our request is another extension.
It's extraordinary what I think we're, some of council is considering asking to be done here. The applicant has met the standards in our zoning ordinance. They've met and proven the calculations that were required for parking. In essence, what I'm, think I'm hearing is, you're asking them to create space where none exists. Or you're asking the applicant to reduce the number of buildable and saleable units in order to, to meet the parking threshold. You're asking the applicant to create a model that isn't viable for them. I, I, I don't think we can go in that direction. They've met the burden of proof and met the requirements of the zoning.
Mr. Director.
Presumably, this came out of P C six to one. There's not much explanation as to why that one stood alone, and perhaps Mr. Bowers can enlighten us on that. But I, I think this was vetted through planning correctly, and I agree with their decision. And although it drastically affects parking, I, with the rules in place as they are today, I don't think that that is enough to vote no to this.
Mr. Bowers.
Yes, I, I can not speak for, but speak, paraphrase what it is, I believe, Member Carnaval was objected to, and that his objection was the location of the dumpster. He, he did not see fit that it be located where it is currently designed.
Mr. Prednik.
I mean, that's, I agree with Mr. Director, but if they've met all the requirements, they met the ordinances, they're not in violation of anything. I mean, there's nothing that we can really, you know, say no to if they've done what their diligence requires. I personally don't like the fact that we're going to put the local residents under, you know, a bit of pressure to find parking, creating more of a problem there. I would like to ask the builders to, you know, maybe there's some other creative ways to find parking or help the local residents. If there's not, there's not. And you guys are engineers, you know what you're doing. But, you know, here that there is a community, they're asking for help, there's going to be an impact on the people. You're asking for these waivers, you're allowed to do so, the engineer agrees with you. This is my opinion. Thank you.
Any further comment? I just have, I think parking is an issue, it's an issue, it continues to be an issue in the borough. I think we need to look at it. Maybe our ordinance needs to require more, more, more parking for units, more onsite parking for the units, because the reality in today's world, I think, is that most households do have more than one car, and I think we're going to continue to see that trend moving forward as we have these projects. But what we have before us is what we have before us. The ordinance is what the ordinance is. The developer has met the requirements under that ordinance. I don't like it because it's going to create issues there. Like Mr. Prednik, I would invite, to the extent possible, if you can have more onsite parking, that's great. I think it would make your units more valuable, because you have the ability to park those on, off the street, which I think a lot of people look for. But we are, we have what we have before us, and we have the ordinances before us, and it appears that they have met the requirements. With Ms. Dugan and Ms. Mail being the nose.
I'll make a motion to approve the sign request for 100 Bridge Street as recommended by the Harb action memo of December 3rd, 2014. This is the, the Bluebird Distillery. It's several signs, including a mural and goose-like neck lady.
Second. Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Prednik. On the motion. I'm just happy that that building's being developed. Other than that, I have no comments. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Moving on to item 12. Action referred from committee, a police and personnel committee.
Okay, I have, it wasn't on the agenda. Go ahead, you go ahead.
Yep.
As it relates to Mr. Koppich?
Yes.
Yes, that is by, by borough code, you can only do that at the first meeting of the calendar year in which he's going to be appointed. So it is on your agenda for January 13th.
Okay, I'm going to make a recommendation for the reappointment of our fire chief. I'll do that now, and then I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Prednik. I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to consider the reappointment of John Buckwalter as fire chief for the period January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2016. And I don't know if he's in here, it doesn't look like he is, but I want to thank him. Okay, I want to thank him for his, for his service.
Motion by Mr. Kuzner, second by Mr. Dalton. On the motion. Hearing no comment. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero.
So I'd like to make the, I know the motion on the agenda is regarding appointing Eileen Colmer to 2020. I'd just like to ask if we can break it up into two. So I'll make the motion to consider appointment of Eileen Colmer to the tree advisory commission for the term ending, Mr. Krak, but June of 2015.
Correct. The, the, the position here, would it be appointing Ms. Colmer to, currently would be to the, to the term that expires June 30th, 2015. And I believe in committee, there was discussion as to whether to go ahead and extend that out to 2020. So I think that's where you're trying to go with your motion.
Yes, thank you. And as soon as there's a second, I'll explain why.
Motion by Mr. Prednik, second by Mr. Dalton. Mr. Prednik.
So Ms. Colmer is a, is a great person to add to our tree advisory commission. She's very passionate about trees, about the borough. I think she'd be a great addition. However, I, you know, we talked about rules before and sticking to the rules and policies. The, the rules and policies say that her term ends in June. We all agree that she would be a good candidate, and in the meeting and in the agenda, it says that we were willing to extend her to 2020. I did talk to her, she said she's more than happy to be extended until June and then be extended until 2020. My intention is to make this appointment having her till June of 2015, and then to make a following motion after that, extending her from June of 2015 to June of 2020. So at least, she has her term in 2020, it's all will be agreed upon in the police personnel safety, but we're at least following the rules. I don't like that we're bending the ordinances for convenience.
Thank you, Mr. Prednik. Any further comment? 2015, 6:30, 2015. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Mr. Prednik.
So I'd like to make a motion to consider appointment of Eileen Colmer to the tree advisor commission for the term starting in June of 2015 and ending in June 30th of 2020. Second.
Motion by Mr. Prednik, second by Mr. Kuzner. On the motion. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero.
Thought we should have an interview, though, but, sorry.
That's all from police and personnel.
All right. Make a motion to approve the budget increase request 2014-29 for $15,832 from donations and overages to police protection, small equipment expenses for the purchase of small equipment. And also the budget transfer request 2014-23 for $2,980.20 from recreation, recreation and supplies to recreation, maintenance, repairs, to repair, repair the tile floor in the bathrooms.
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Prednik. On the motion. Mr. Prednik.
Mr. Krak, may I ask for a reminder, for the record, for the 2014-29? Could you please explain, or maybe that's geared more towards the mayor and the police chief?
Lieutenant informed me that was a clerical move that had to be done for bookkeeping purposes.
Mr., maybe Mr. Neese can shed some light on this.
I think what's happening here is that there, and this is me just surmising, to be honest with you, because I don't, I'm not particular with this particular one, but I think what they're doing is really wanting to increase both the donation account and overage account, and increase the expense account, and the money's coming from the donation account that's been given, which is actually a 250 account, which is there. So the money's been given, I believe, by, maybe even part of the money was given tonight earlier to, to purchase what's being purchased. And so what we're having to do is increase the revenue and then also increase the expense. And that's what's, I think, I believe what's happening.
And just to be clear, there's, it doesn't, it's, it's neutral to the budget. It's, it's the accounting side of things, not increasing anything new to the, to the department.
Any further comment?
No, just thank you for the clarification.
Seeing no further comment, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries seven zero with Mr. Kuzner out of the room. Anything further from finance? Infrastructure?
Yes, Council President. Would like to make a motion authorizing staff to execute a contract extension with Constellation Energy through May 2017.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Bowers, second by Mr. Dalton. Mr. Bowers.
Yes, if I may, if I may ask the manager to take us through some of the, maybe some of the documents that are in our packet, and explain how the pricing was derived by, how pricing was derived. I think there was some question across some council whether it was, the pricing was derived from a, in a competitive situation.
That's correct. The, the, we go through what is called a municipal utility alliance, which is through the Pennsylvania Municipal League. They vetted a number of companies several years back, and then received a legal opinion from their law firm, Saul Ewing, back in 2010, that affirms the fact that multiple municipalities through the alliance could secure various things, one of them being utilities, for the purposes of not having each of those municipalities to go out and, and bid individually. Currently, there's about 250 municipalities that participate in that alliance. We were one of them several years ago, when we wanted to realize savings in, in electrical energy. If we were to try and do it ourselves, there's several things at play here. One is we, we don't have the technical expertise to go out and do that, even if we were to put out an RFP, because we don't know who all of the brokers are, we don't know who all of the, the various players are. The municipal alliance did that for us. It's, it's akin to municipal, it's akin to the Co-Stars program. The Chester County Intermediate Unit does that for our oil, for all of our facilities. And our contract currently, it's a three-year contract, that ends in April of 2015. We had, we had a secure rate of, for, for electrical energy, and I believe it was .6 cents per, for, per kilowatt hour. Today, I received a new quote, they come out every Wednesday, or every Tuesday, a new quote that current through May of 2017, the rate that you would be looking at if we were to engage a contract would be .06610, which is just above where we were at three years ago. Natural gas is something that changes, it has much more volatility, even though the price of gasoline is coming down, natural gas has a, is a different animal. There's a lot of different players that are out there that also do this, but they're, they're more brokers. We're not, we don't have the ability to challenge what that information is. That's why we've gone through the, through the Pennsylvania Municipal League, using the alliance to, to do that. They've basically done the RFP for the borough. Extending this contract is something that would be consistent with our program of work. They've vetted, they go out, they do the auction on a weekly basis. At such time as we feel that we've got the right price, we would engage that contract. There's no requirement, if you approve this tonight, to do it today. We can monitor that anytime between now and April of 2015. The key would be to try and get as close to or better than where we're currently at.
Mr. Prednik.
Thank you for the clarification, first of all. You say alliance, it's akin to equivalent to co-op, correct? Just a group of municipalities buying venture together?
Correct. Any other comment on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Anything further from infrastructure? Economic development? Jen?
Nope, nothing.
Nothing. Thank you. Policy?
Two items. I'd like to make a motion to consider scheduling and advertising a public hearing, to consider an ordinance amending the Phoenixville Borough Code to add a new chapter, Chapter 1, Administration and Government, Part 3, Participation of Council by Telecommunication Devices, to allow borough council to participate and vote during council meetings by means of telecommunication devices in accordance with the Pennsylvania Borough Code. It's recommended in Committee 3-0.
Motion by Mr. Dalton, second by Mr. Prednik. On the motion. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero.
And secondly, I'd like to make another motion to consider scheduling and advertising a public hearing, to consider an ordinance amendment, amending Chapter 15, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Part 2, Traffic Regulations, Section 15-207, One Way Roadways Established in Part 4, General Parking Regulations, Section 15-406, Handicap Parking Zones of the Code of Ordinances of the Borough of Phoenixville, as recommended in Committee 3-0.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dalton, second by Mr. Bowers. On the motion. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Anything further? I'll take that as a no. We'll move on to item 13, the second round of public participation. I will invite members of the public to come forward. Please identify yourself, sign in, identify whether you're a borough resident, and keep comments to five minutes, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and it's Leo Scoot at 312 Virginia Avenue. Again, on this issue, I wanted to bring again to council's attention about the redistricting and the problems we had on Election Day, and the effort to try to put middle one as a voting unit instead of being split, as it is right now, between the 155th and 157th. Those of you who may have worked at the polls on Election Day saw a lot of problems in the voting. I was at the Methodist Church about quarter of seven, 18 people waiting in line to vote. Doors opened, people went in to vote. A few minutes later, four people came out and said that they weren't on the list, they were not supposed to vote at that site. One of the gentlemen said, I can't understand this, I voted here in the primary, and now they're telling me I'm not allowed to vote here. There were problems at the high school. There was at least 50 or more people who were turned away, who were told they weren't on the list of the voters, and to try either the on the list of the voters, and to try either the library or the Methodist Church that they might be there. There was a young attorney there working for Ryan Costello, and he, at one point, said, "I never saw anything like this. I can't believe this is happening." There was the judge of election at the West One who kept track of how many people came to vote and were not on the list there at West One, and she totaled over 100 that had that. We also had people who were sent to two different places or three different places to vote before hopefully they got to the right place. What we don't know is how many people said, "The hell with it, I'm going home, I don't need this," and didn't bother to vote at all. Our typical turnout in a governor's election is about 50 percent. This one, we were close, we were about 47 percent, but there were problems. After the election, I called the voter services, Chairman Jim Forsyte spoke to him, because I had warned them that this was going to happen, because I saw it happening during the primary when we only had a 10 percent turnout, and here we were hitting close to 50 percent with lots of problems. His reply to me was that in December of 2013, he sent out, he claimed 5,000 cards went out to voters telling them that they, you know, were voting at a new polling place or their polling place had been changed. I have no way to verify that, that's what he said. He also blamed Phoenixville, he said that we didn't do a good job like Westchester did. They had it on their website, they had a map, they reached out and tried to tell voters where to go and that, so I guess we all sit here and share some of the blame about what happened on Election Day. But the main reason I'm here is to try to get the situation corrected with Middle One, which is split between two legislative districts. And before tonight's meeting started, I gave Chairman Charlie Kowalski, Mr. Kowalski, a folder, there's enough copies for all the members of council, and the one sheet has, I got from voter services, which spells out a step-by-step procedure, which is supposed to start 180 days before the election. I don't know whether that means the primary election or the general election, because it doesn't say there. But this is something that I had never seen before, but it spells out how you're supposed to change the lines there in the precinct. I also included a map, I copied it on my fax machine, it's a color map, but the area that would be involved would be the area north of the black line, it's kind of a shaded area, and it's not a large area, either in the number of voters or in the population, because you've got to remember, it's not the number of voters, it's the population in that district. But this is an area that would be bounded by West High Street, it would include Railroad Street, Richards Lane, and I think half of Franklin Avenue, just on the one side of the first block of Franklin Avenue. To show you how small this area is, the breakdown of the vote for Jim Burns versus Becky Corwin was Jim Burns, 34 votes, Becky Corwin, 14 votes. See, so we're not dealing with a large amount, but according to the voter services director, the way to correct the situation is to take that part of Middle One and move it into North Two, to make it part of North Two. And thereby, the next time people went to vote in Middle One, everybody would be voting in the same legislative district. Now, if it could be done next year, that's fine, because next year, all we have is just local elections and county elections that would be on the ballot. The state legislature election won't come up until 2016, so we still have time on that. But as you look at the sheet there, it is a long and entailed process. Now, I've been in contact with Brian Pepples, who's the Republican chairman, I'm serving as the Democrat chairman of Phoenixville, and both of us have agreed that we would pursue this. And if you look at the first requirement, it says that we have to get the committee people to sign on. Okay, it says all the committee people. Now, like Republicans, Democrats, we both have vacancies in committees, we had a committee person pass away recently. So our attempt will be, once council okays it, because there's hardly anything there that refers to council, it seems like it goes to voter service, but the original redistricting came through Borough Council. That's why I think the Borough Council should get involved with this. But in any event, we'll carry out whatever we can carry out as far as the parties, and then we'll, you know, submit things and follow the instructions as they're stated there on the second sheet, and hopefully then it'll solve some of that confusion. Because I think I told you last time I was here in early November there, that the problem was, like, some people, when they go to vote at Middle One, some people would be handed a ballot that said Moskowitz or Kemp, other people would be handed a ballot that would say Corwin or Burns, which, you know, hopefully they got the right ballot, but who knows? So if we could solve this, it would put the ward, not the ward, I'm sorry, the precinct, it would put Middle One back together as one unit, and then the other part would be added to North Two and become part of North Two. I know I've been involved with this a while, going all the way back to the redistricting with the state level, the Supreme Court and that, and believe me, it's confusing to me too. So anybody who, if you have a question, I would try to answer it, I may not have the answer to it, but, but I think it's something that's worth working on and trying to get this situation with our voters straight up, because I'm not happy that so many people did not go to the right place to vote. I don't think that was our fault. I think we have voter services that's supposed to take care of stuff like that, so. That's my report, Mr. Chairman. If there's any questions, or if I could be of any help to you on the redistricting, I certainly would try then, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Skoda. This is council particip, or this is public participation, so we'll hold the questions and maybe address it afterwards, but this is the opportunity for the public to speak.
So I'm Brian Pepple, Chairman of the Phoenixville Republican Committee, 2014 Sandstone Terrace. So just to reiterate a couple of things that Mr. Skoda said, I also am in favor of adjusting that line of the boundary of the Middle One and North Two precinct to align with the state legislative line between the 155th and the 157th, to avoid voter confusion on Election Day. I will disagree, though, I think it will require us to do it very soon, because it potentially could affect council races next year. If a candidate was from the North Ward that lived in that little block, and then all of a sudden they're in the Middle Ward, or vice versa, right? We don't want to mess that up, right? So, I don't think it will, but it's a potential, so I'd like to get it resolved sooner than later. And my understanding of the process that Mr. Skoda passed out is that's a process that's reserved for the political parties, if they want to request a change, and may not have any action needed by council. So I think we're here just more as an FYI.
I just see it would be good to have your solicitor look at it and, you know, make sure, because it seems to be a policy that the county has had for a long time as to how to change it, because if I read it correctly, it has to go to the Board of Election, which is different than, you know, the chair of the board, or the chairman of the department, and then it goes to the court for their approval. So, you know, all the way along here, we've got step-by-step things, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Skoda. And Mr. Pepple. Any further public participation? Then I will close that round of public participation, and if there's any council comment at this time, we'll go with Mr. Bowers and then Mr. Prednik.
Thank you, Council President. I guess two, two questions. First is, apparently then the county is willing to waive its primary, what we understood as its primary criteria was to equally distribute population. So they're willing to waive that, that criteria to make this work?
They're willing to allow the court to waive it.
Mr. Pepple, if I can ask you to come for purposes of those going to be viewing this at home?
My understanding of, of this particular process is they're willing to let the court of common pleas consider the adjustment when requested to do so by the political parties affected. So the court would make the ultimate decision as to, to the request from the political parties.
Based on the 2000 census, our population was 16,400, which meant that each ward, not precinct, each ward had to have 4,100 people, but it doesn't have to be exact, see? So, and I'm thinking that if you go back to the committee that had all the GPS numbers back there, because you can't use numbers from right now, you have to go back to the 2000 census. I don't think you're going to see a significant population change that would materially affect either the North Two or the, or the Middle One. I think it'll be a slight change, maybe 100 people moving one way and subtracting from the other way, but the GPS figures will tell you that.
No, I, I mean firsthand, I know why that line ended up where that line is, and it was because of equal distribution of population. It simply, you know, none of us certainly wanted to make it look like that necessarily, but the population numbers and our advice from council, our advice from the solicitor point in time was that we needed to create equal distribution of population, and that's how it was achieved. And I guess second question, doesn't the same situation exist now High Street, where High Street is now split between North and, well, where High Street is, used to be all North, now it's split Middle, Middle and North. So don't we have the same situation there?
Well, no. If you, if you think about over there, that section of High Street, most of the houses are on the north side of High Street. King Terrace is on the south side, and then there's two or three houses before you hit the Polish Club. So it's not a high population area right there on High Street. The other, and remember, again, we're looking at the legislative districts and not the, not the wards, you know, the ward elections, right?
And the former legislative district was, was North, North 1, 2, well, was North 1, 2, 3, right?
North 1, 2, and 3.
So North?
Right. Or in the 155th.
Mm-hmm.
And then they added West One to that.
Correct.
I'm, I'm going to interject here, right now we have two political parties seeking to do something. Council, this is not the forum for council to discuss this unless council wants to put a motion on the floor to some extent to discuss this, or reform the committee that went through the redistricting to discuss it. So unless we have that, I think we need to either move on with the agenda or, or do something else. Mr. Kuzner?
Yeah, just going off of what you're saying, the, I mean, the most we could do is a resolution, correct? Because even with, what Mr. Bowers is saying, because I was on the redistricting committee with him and Mayor Skoda, we, we had no involvement with the state lines. We were all, there was just all borough lines. So I mean, there's nothing more we could do aside from a resolution, correct?
I would think so, but I think that's, I think we need some clarification and discussion on this, and again, I don't think this is the forum for it at this time. Mr. Prednik?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Kowalski, for saying that. I agree wholeheartedly. I don't think this is a borough business at all. I mean, the, the first two lines, it says that the Republican Committee and the Democratic Committee agree or request this, and then in the second letter, it says that a borough, township, or political party can certify, request a division. And then the first thing on there, it says that the 100 days prior, it says a letter from, by all the committee people of both political parties. So it's all here. I don't think there is anything we can do to help. I mean, thanks for bringing it to attention. Like you said, it's an FYI, but I don't think there, we need to do anything else.
Moving on with the rest of the agenda, staff reports. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Last month, month of November, we had a lot of military and veteran appreciation events throughout the borough. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank Sean Maisy and his family for making our officers who were on duty on Thanksgiving Day very happy by providing them with a meal. And I also made sure that our officers knew that Sean was a member of the Phoenixville Fire Department, Station 65. We had the holiday candlelight tour. Also this month, I attended a career day at Holy Family and shared with them the joys of being the mayor. On the 24th, we had Congressman-elect Ryan Costello toured our police department downstairs, stopped in for a visit. And finally, I'd like to speak some about the Firebird. The call came in around 3:30 in the morning, Saturday morning. When I got to the field, you know, I was speechless, angry, and hurt. The fire department was unable to save the structure at that time, it was requested that we allow it to burn. So we stayed on scene to about 6, 7 o'clock in the morning. By 8 o'clock that morning, people from the community and everything, you know, it was decided that the festival would go on, and people from the community started donating lumber, pallets, food, you name it, the community came together. And I also was on the crew with the fire department when we went up there to set the bird on fire, the newly constructed Firebird. And by that time, you know, I wasn't speeches anymore, my anger had subsided, and the hurt was, was just replaced with that overwhelming feeling and sense of community and love we have here. And I was, was, and I am extremely proud to be a mayor of this town, and how the town, I've heard from far and wide, all the networks were there throughout the course of the day, what kind of community we have here. And I, and I just, just want to say, I'm overwhelmed, and again, I'm extremely proud to be your mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Crack?
Actually, there's, there's an item on there that I had put, assuming that I was going to be in a position to, to make a recommendation tonight regarding temporary help for administration, and I'm just not there at this point in time, so I'd like to remove that from the agenda, and if need be, bring it back in, in January.
Thank you, Mr. Crack. Mr. Prednik?
Just a question, Mr. Crack, then, are, I know Mr. Neese is leaving towards the end of the month, correct?
Mr. Neese is gone.
All right, so I guess that's in progress, then. Thank you. He's still sitting there, so I'm assuming.
Anything further for the manager? Mr. Bowers?
Again, just a, just clarification, and maybe it's wording, but when you say part-time, part-time, is there a difference between part-time and contract? And would, are we as a municipality able to engage in employment contract?
Several things. One, I have an opportunity, because I was remiss, to publicly thank Steve for all of the work that he's done, and so I'll, I'll eat some crow there for not doing it in the first place. And so Steve, thank you for all that you've done here. I say a lot of things in jest, but you know where my heart's at, and he's done a lot for this borough, so thank you. In response to, Mr. Bowers, in response to your statement, there wouldn't, this position would be, it's not contractual in the sense that it would, it would affect a union contract or anything of that sort, it would be more of part-time help to get us through the lack of people. I've got a person out on maternity leave, Mr. Neese is out, and we've got some need with the audit and everything else to just do general yeoman work, if you will, to use the Navy term, and this would be no different than reaching out to a, a temporary services company and asking for administrative support. We happen to know of a couple of folks that have worked for us in the past that are interns, they might be available, so without knowing what is really available, without really sitting down and putting a game plan together, I pulled it off the agenda.
I pulled it off the agenda, and already give me time to think about, well, what are we going to do in January? I'm not sure if that answered your question or not.
Thank you, Mr. Crack. Moving on, co-directors' report is in our packet, Public Works Director. We have Brian, Mr. Watson here, if anybody has any. Mr. Hector?
Just a quick question, and maybe the manager can, wants to address it. Can you tell us the state of the field following the Firebird Festival? Just so, for edification, we all kind of know what we're looking at.
Sure. The, unfortunately, and this, it's a combination of what transpired and euphoria at the same time, but the field is a mess. It's going to take a lot of effort on that of staff to bring that field back to the conditions that are playable. And I'm not sure if we're going to be able to do that. We had some recommendations not to do some things in the spirit of trying to bring the bird back to life for the event. That enthusiasm, and that overwhelming enthusiasm created situations on a very wet and muddy field that may not have happened had it not had that incident, but that's just what transpired. We've got to decide what our, and I'm being candid with you, we're going to have to really seriously look at what kinds of events in the winter months that we have, because it almost always rains. In seven years, five of the seven years, it's rained on the Christmas parade. It's that time of the year.
Perhaps it's premature, but can you put any sort of dollar assessment to it? And I'm presuming that we will be keeping any deposit that was put down?
The answer to the latter is yes. The answer to the former is, I don't have a specific number, but it's going to outweigh the $250 deposit.
Moving on, Fire Chiefs Report, I believe it's in the packet. It is. Finance Directors' Report. Fire Department Liaison. Nothing. I believe we have a need for executive session for litigation and real estate?
That's correct.
Do we have anything that, and personnel, so litigation, real estate, and personnel, do we anticipate coming out of executive session to act?
Not on litigation or real estate, Mr. Crack. On personnel?
Uh, not on personnel.
Okay, so then I will entertain a motion to move into executive session. I don't believe we have that capability yet.
Jen's going back to bed now.
So I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session. Motion by Mr. Hector, second by Mr. Prednik. All those.